Particular at the Silicon Valley Clean Water Plant. This is a plant that was built in 1980 that has not been upgraded significantly since that time. So virtually all the process systems, equipment and everything else are wearing out at the same time. And so they have a massive capital program and that's what our 15% share goes towards at the treatment plan is to replace those improvement parts and everything else to help it keep it functioning and delivering the treated effluent that's needed. The second part of the question is, are the sewer rates based on the amount of water used? And the answer to that question is no. Essentially, the sewer system as it's provided to each of the residences and businesses in town, essentially, it doesn't matter if the particular location uses lots of water or a little bit of water. And especially from a residential standpoint, the pipes are the same size, the mains are the same size. So we don't have higher costs to convey or treat the wastewater based on the amount of water that gets used. It's a pretty common question to get asked, and yet, in our case, we have a system that has a fixed cost of operating it and a known cost to repair and replace it. And so we feel like a flat rate for sewer is probably the best way to go.
Thank you, Jay. It sounds like we could do a better job of maintaining the health of our sewer system. For more about this, you can visit the website for the city of San Carlos. This is City Hall in Focus. I'm Gloria Cohn.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I call to order the November 22nd, 2021, City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. Would you all please stand and join me in the present Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda this evening? Seeing none. Item four, Greg, do you have a report from closed session? Hang on one second. I'm not actually seeing him. I'm not seeing him in the call. Is it too late to change the order of the agenda and come back to this?
We can do that, but I can also report out that City Council authorized the city attorney to initiate and participate in litigation on PCBs.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jeff. All right. Okay. So see, Greg, you just joined us and Jeff just reported out from closed session. So we've covered that item. Okay. All right. So the next item is a presentation. This is a proclamation to Assistant City Manager Tara Peterson upon her retirement from the city. And is Tara with us this evening? There she is. Awesome. All right. Welcome Tara. So it is bittersweet that I have the honor of commending Tara Peterson upon her retirement in the city of San Carlos. Whereas Tara Peterson joined the city of San Carlos on October 14th, 2013, as an assistant to the city manager and was promoted to Assistant City Manager two years later on October 19th, 2015. Whereas during her tenure with San Carlos, Tara played an integral part in enhancing the city's communications and developing a more engaged community through multiple vantage points, including expanding the city's social media presence, implementing a new website, publishing a series of newsletters and mailers, producing a series of educational videos, implementing an online forum, establishing a biannual community survey, and creating and managing a Citizens Academy for adults and youth. And whereas, in addition to Tara Peterson's involvement in the city's communication outreach, she also played an instrumental role in the city's green and climate production efforts, including leading water conservation efforts, completing a climate mitigation and adaptation plan, hosting several Earth Day cleanup events, and under her leadership, the city received a Platinum Beacon Spotlight Award for its sustainability efforts. And whereas Tara gifted her talents to the agency at large as she managed the task of overseeing the implementation and activities related to the council's strategic plan with ease and poise, and served as interim Public Works Director. And whereas Tara has contributed enormously to the betterment of the San Carlos community, most notably during the COVID-19 pandemic, she assisted in overseeing the emergency operation, including emergency operations center activities, emergency actions, council initiatives and directives, and support for the community. Whereas Tara is best known for her efficiency through attention to detail and sense of humor, and holds the highest respect from her colleagues in the San Carlos community. Now therefore be proclaimed that I Laura Palmer Lohan, Mayor of the city of San Carlos, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby commend Tara Peterson for her invaluable contributions and dedication to the city of San Carlos, and invite San Carlos to reflect upon these achievements and the impact she has left upon the city of San Carlos, presented this 22nd day of November 2021. Thank you so much Tara for all that you've done for our community. And I know for one, I will very much miss working with you and am very excited for your next adventure. At this point, I'd like to invite my council colleagues to make a few comments. We'll start with Council Member Rack and then go to Council Member Dugan and then Council Member Collins and then Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tara, congratulations on your retirement. And I didn't know, I'm assuming you have, you're a Star Wars fan because I see Yoda in the photo, but I'm guessing, you know, unless my eyes deceive me. So I learn new things all the time. But congratulations. It's been wonderful working with you. You've really been a great professional and a joy to work with. And I wish you the best of luck in your, in your future endeavors. And I hope you'll swing by every once in a while and help keep us in our place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tara, wow, 25 plus years of public service. Thank you for that. And I will say that the San Carlos city staff has a knack of making all this look easy. And I know it's not easy. And I know you've been a big part of all that behind the scenes and otherwise. And I've enjoyed the ways we've worked together. I was a beneficiary of the Citizens Academy, so I thank you for that as well. And I wish you the best in your retirement. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Collins and then Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Gosh Tara, I don't know what to say. I'm just, you know, I'm gonna miss you so much. You did so much for me over the last eight years. It's been an incredible ride. You know, you always had my back. And I think you helped me put together two state of the city addresses, one of which came off, the other one of which we were on the verge of getting it done. But I'd come back to you and I'd say, I want to make this change and that change. And you just said, done, done, and done. And it was, it just took a huge load off of my mind in putting this, putting those things together. So I'm very grateful for that. But you're always responsive, you're always professional, you're always competent, one of the fastest people on staff to return emails. You became my go-to person a lot of times. You know, it's easy to forget you're there. But I can't tell you how much I just appreciate you, everything you did for the city, for the council, and for me personally. So I wish you the very best. I'm sure that probably another trip to Disneyland is on your, is on your bucket list.
I was there a few weeks ago, but I'll go again. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you again.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tara, you and I had a chance to chat today, but I just went to reiterate just how grateful I am for all of your hard work. And as I said, some of your, a lot of your work is behind the scenes, that your impact has been felt throughout the city. And you know, the mayor's list of everything that you have accomplished is just, there's just so many wonderful things that you brought to light and made happen. And I know that they're just all so deeply appreciated by our community. And I want you to know how much we have appreciated you and hope that you won't be a stranger around City Hall. So thank you Tara and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. I see City Manager Jeff Maltby has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations Tara.
Thanks.
I really, really can't believe that we're here. I think I've, I think I've been able to exist in denial about this for quite a while. But it's a very well-earned retirement. I honestly could not imagine having had a better business partner. You're such a thoughtful person, probably one of the most hardworking people I've ever worked with. Your capacity to share your wisdom and your time with our younger staff is something I greatly appreciated. And I think you will have left a lasting legacy as a result of that work in our organization. You will always be part of our family in San Carlos and you will always be part of my family. So we're gonna miss you, but we know you're not going far. And we know you're always gonna only be a phone call away if we need you. So thank you very much and congratulations.
Thanks, Jeff.
Tara, would you like to say anything?
Well, wow, that was, that was a lot of nice things, guys. I really appreciate the comments. You guys all hit it on the head. I've always kept my, a very low profile, but always enjoyed the work and always enjoyed trying to make the city everything it could be. It's been such a pleasure. And I'm going out with my favorite job I ever had, just the best coworkers. And I'm gonna miss everybody. So yeah, you might see me more because I think I'm gonna be bored, but I don't know yet. We'll see. But thank you so much for the kind words.
Thank you Tara. We wish you well on your journey. Please stay in touch.
Thank you. I will.
All right. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make comments at this time?
No, I don't see any hands.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. With that, we will move to Council Communications and Announcements, which are brief items from members of the city council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature and no action will be taken on these items this evening. Members will be able to report on subcommittees, regional boards, and commissions and other committees. Council Member Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to acknowledge receipt today of 15 or 20 emails from folks in San Carlos expressing concern about the Crystal Springs Cross Country Course potentially losing its lease from the SF PUC. And I believe there's a sentiment perhaps that San Carlos officially joined the effort to lobby that board. So I just want to acknowledge all that, that email. And I also understand through some correspondence I received as well, that Belmont will be considering an official resolution this evening concerning its support of maintaining the cross-country course. And so in response to all that, under agenda setting, I think I will ask us to consider in the future adopting a similar resolution of support. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Council Member Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to report on, I attended the CCAG meeting last, last week. It's too early to have done it this week. And just one, I know that we've got an agenda item on the Holly 101 interchange that they did send, CCAG did send a letter of support in terms of for our grant application. And then also we received an update on the Express Lanes project. And I think there's an article today in the Daily Journal, but they are looking at beginning the tolling process, I believe sort of from Whipple South that first half, and potentially as early as January 28th. So that's gonna, they'll do some testing and get that process moving. So things are moving along with that Express Lanes project and they expect by the end of next year to have it fully, fully functioning.
Thank you. All right. I have a couple of items I'd like to share. The first is, I just want to acknowledge the Community Foundation. They held a poetry slam on Friday night at Devil's Canyon. There was about 10 participants, ages and age, and age range from nine years old to mid 70s. And it was just phenomenal, a great outpouring of support and the courage play at that microphone was just so incredibly inspiring. So I want to thank Community Foundation in that event wrapped up the United Against Hate theme month activities. And there's also a banner that is displayed across Laurel Streets. On one side it says United Against Hate, and the other side it says United, San Carlos United for Love. So I thought that really great community outlet event in San Carlos. The other thing that I wanted to share is, we also have another milestone on city staff. And that is that Jeff Maltby has spent 20 years with the city. And I just wanted to do a shout out for Jeff and recognize his commitment to our community. He started as a senior management analyst in January of 2001. Four years later, he became the Deputy City Manager. This was followed a year, not quite a year later, in the role of Administrative Services Director. In September of 2010, Jeff became interim city manager. And in March, six months later, he was named City Manager for our community. During this time, Jeff has led the team, he's worked with the staff and council to create great value During this time, Jeff has led the team, he's worked with the staff and council to create great value in our community with respect to ensuring that PGME took responsibility for the safety of Natural Gas Line 147. He helped us transition to a new budget process and performance measures. He partnered with Redwood City Fire and Emergency Services. He updated numerous facilities, including the addition of a City Hall dog park, Highland Park renovation, remodeling of the library, Crestview Park improvements, working with Tara on increased communication and all the numbers, different ways that's done now. It's very, been very helpful to bring our community along. He's also worked on big projects, including the East Side Connect Project, the Palo Alto Medical Foundation Project, Winding Way, Wheeler Plaza Landmark Hotel, master plan for North View, Crestview Park, Transit Village, and I think not the least of which is onboarding four new city council members in as many years. So, thank you, Jeff, for your service to the city of San Carlos, and congratulations on twenty years, and I hope you decide to make it another twenty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was quite a surprise. I can't believe it's been twenty years, and in fact, it's actually been a little bit longer than that. I was a college intern in our planning department in nineteen ninety-two for one summer. So my history with the city goes way back. It's a fantastic community, as you all are well aware. Can't believe how much of my life has been spent in San Carlos and all the different phases and milestones that have come along the way. And I too hope, hope it's many more years to come. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
Congratulations, Jeff.
I had my congrats as well. I won't go, I won't say anything because I'll, I'll go on for ten minutes about you, so I'll just leave it at that.
I think I might have been the only one around when that all started. Congratulations, Jeff.
Congratulations.
All right, the next item is public comments. An item is not on our agenda, so persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not listed on that agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly comment or respond to statements or questions posed, but only is allowed as under the Brown Act. City Council general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future council agenda for more comprehensive action or formal public discussion. Crystal, are there members of the community who wish to make comment at this time?
Yes, I do see two hands at the moment. First up is John Lilligrin. You should be able to unmute.
Yes, hi, my name is John Lilligrin, and Councilmember Dugan had mentioned that you would be talking about the Crystal Springs cross-country course. I am the head coach at Carlmont High School for Cross Country. I'm also a San Carlos resident, and as many of you know, over the last couple of years, there's been some concern about, or complaints about the course. It was built fifty years ago by Bob Rush, and over that time, he developed very good relationships with the neighbors and with Belmont Police Department. And it's just been the last couple of years that a small group of homeowners have been raising complaints, so there's been meetings and negotiations to try to come to an agreement, but as I say, the small group has not been satisfied, but by and large, a majority of Belmont residents, as well as other people that use the course, have been very happy and satisfied. As a coach, it's one of the top courses in California. We use it quite a bit at Carlmont. It's also open to the public as an agreement from CSM, as the permit holders, but it was built initially as a cross-country course, and people kind of forget that. So, we're working with the neighbors and the neighborhood to keep good relationships, but I agree with Councilmember Dugan that perhaps San Carlos could issue a proclamation similar to what Belmont is doing. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Next up is Patrick Brennan. You should be able to unmute.
Thank you, council members, and thank you, John, and Dugan, for proposing a resolution for protecting Crystal Springs Trails, which is really a community treasure, where families go to introduce their kids and young adults to a beautiful setting that overlooks rolling hills and shrubs, and where many high schools, such as Carlmont, Boyan, Aldos in the area, have enjoyed both the exultations and the despair of competition. And my son is, has been one of those, and his participation at Crystal Springs has really opened his eyes to importance of of open space in general. But this is not just about my son, or even about his teammates, or even the other teams that were there a couple of weeks ago, competing for the right to go to state. It's about, you know, keeping this treasure open to the entire community, both those that are privileged enough to live in houses that border that treasure, as well as others that are not so privileged. You know, so we gotta keep it open to the young, to the old, to the young adults, and so I would urge you all to support John Dugan's resolution, and let's keep in mind, it's not even about, it's about the last fifty years, it's about our current time, but even more, it's about all the future generations benefit from this priceless community resource. Let's not let what has happened to some of the California beaches around here, that where access is effectively cut off by those who are privileged enough to live nearby, let's not let that happen in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick, and there are no further hands.
All right, thank you. All right, so that brings us to the consent calendar. Are there any members of the council who wish to pull an item? Okay, seeing none.
Through the chair, I do want to point out a typo that we have on the October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one special and regular meeting minutes. Those are shown as items B and C on the consent calendar. In the City Attorney's Report from Closed Session, it should state that the settlement that was agreed upon is three million seventy-five thousand dollars. So if council can add that to their motion tonight, we'll be sure to amend that afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, does anybody wish to make a motion on the consent calendar with the proposed correction to the minutes?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a stab at it. I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through J with amendments to the October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one special and regular meeting minutes for the litigation settlement amount as noted by staff. And Item K, adopting Ordinance Number 1574, an ordinance in the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code Section 18.29.040E1, Public Notice Requirements for Residential Design Review Committee Applications, and Item L, adopting Ordinance Number 1575, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adding Chapter 8.60, Mandatory Organic Waste Disposal Reduction to the San Carlos Municipal Code to comply with Senate Bill SB 1383, California Short-lived Climate Pollutants Reduction Act of 2016.
Madam Mayor? I will second that with the proviso that we are adding the corrections as mentioned by our city clerk, the numerical corrections.
Great, thank you. Are there any, any further discussion? Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make comments?
No, there are no hands.
Okay, thank you. Could you please call the roll? Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes, thank you. All right, that brings us to Item 9A, which is consideration of authorizing the release of the Request for Proposal, RFP, to implement the City Council Strategic Goal for Downtown San Carlos. And with us this evening to talk about this item is Al Sibay, Community Development Director, and Lisa Porres, Planning Manager. Welcome, Al and Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. Again, Lisa Porres, Planning Manager for the City of San Carlos. And Al and I will be giving a brief presentation on the item for the council this evening. So as this slide indicates, the item before you this evening is a request for proposals to prepare a downtown specific plan. I have, Crystal, do I have, thank you, Crystal. The recommendation this evening is a request that the council authorize staff to release, to release the RFP, or Request for Proposals. As the council may recall, a total of one million dollars was allocated to this project as part of the budget process for fiscal years twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three. Next slide. And this project implements a City Council strategic goal. And this includes, the strategic goal includes staff's collaboration with the council to develop a scope of work to prepare a downtown plan that includes inclusive civic engagement and draws upon the community's shared desires and aspirations to transform the downtown. And now I would like to turn it over to Al Sibay.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm just gonna briefly talk about the boundary and how the two phases were put forward, and how the boundaries are a little bit different than what you originally talked about in your strategic planning process, and as you may recall, back in the strategic planning process, when this was identified as one of the key objectives to do the downtown plan, there was discussion about doing a downtown plan all the way from Holly Street down to Eden. So all the way the length of Laurel Street. And what you're being presented with today is a Phase One and a Phase Two plan, and the boundaries would be on the north side, Holly Street, the south, Britton, to the west, Walnut Street, and to the east, Al Camino, and what I'll do is, I'll briefly discuss, well, why these areas, or why was the boundary changed? And essentially, the downtown, the City Council Downtown Committee took a look at the RFP and the scope of work, and in discussion and consideration of the boundaries, and talk about, discussion about the timeline, there was an idea that bringing it in from Britton up to Holly would focus the scope, and maybe there would be an opportunity to condense the time as well. And in addition to that, moving it out to Al Camino makes sense in a number of different ways, and so I'm gonna go ahead and forward it to the next slide. Thank you. So this is a much more detailed map, and let's, if we could just take a look at this for a moment, and what you see here is the zoning map for City of San Carlos in the downtown area, and the yellow hatch line is the Phase One proposed boundary area, and so when the subcommittee, when the downtown subcommittee took a look at this, they realized that the downtown, there's possibilities for development potentially to occur from Al Camino out to Laurel Street as well, and consolidation of lots, and that, that could very well occur. One of the other things to think about when, when we're doing master plan like this, some of the key considerations are the physical form and the character of the area, and what we know is that this MUDC area that you see in dark purple is that, really the historic core of the retail district in the City of San Carlos. And that G represents the historic train area, or the train depot, and things really built up around the train depot of San Carlo, the eleven and twelve hundred blocks of San Carlos Avenue, and then along the six, seven, and eight hundred blocks of Laurel Street. And when you're in those areas, when you're walking down the street, you know where you are. It really is, for many people, the city's living room. And so this area, this, this purple area represents that, that historic retail core of San Carlos. So what you saw in the scope that you received is the, the boundary, if you could, there we go, the boundary in the document you received was kind of through the mid-block between Walnut Street and Laurel Street here, and so staff is suggesting that this boundary move out to Walnut Street to be consistent with the zoning there along the historic core. And then, again, the downtown subcommittee suggested that the boundary move out to Al Camino. As I noted earlier, there's potential for lot consolidation, but also the former boundary went along the zoning, but you see the alley there, and we know that that alley is a key area of mobility for our community, and I'm sure you've, as, as I've done, has taken it as a shortcut sometimes through downtown, and it's, it's really a key part of our downtown and how people get around. But also, these buildings back up to that alleyway, and moving the boundary out to Al Camino then incorporates those, those buildings and those properties into the downtown area. As you know, we all also have public parking, and so that would integrate the public parking that spans both of these zoning areas. And to the south of Britton, the subcommittee is recommending that the boundary end at Britton for this first phase. And again, that is to really focus the specific plan into this area, and perhaps focus the time as well. And that concludes my component of the presentation. I'm gonna turn it back over to Lisa.
Thank you, Al, and we'll go.
Oh, wait a minute. We do have, I did want to focus some, excuse me, Lisa, if I could just focus really quickly on Phase Two. Sorry about that, but so Phase Two would go from Britton Avenue down to Eden, and as you can see, the green area there, that's the zoning along Al Camino Real, and then the red area is another zone on the west side of Laurel Street, and that would be included in that Phase One boundary from Britton down to Eden, the extent of Laurel Street, and that would be the Phase Two plan boundary. That concludes my presentation. Laura, I'm gonna, or Lisa, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you, Al. So the type of plan being recommended to prepare a plan for the downtown area is a specific plan, and a specific plan, as is shown here on the slide, it's actually defined and regulated under California state law. And under the legislation for a specific plan, specific plans are required to contain four primary components. And the first two are pretty easy and kind of basic to understand because they kind of follow our general plan and zoning format. The first is, it contains a set of goals and policies addressing land use. The plan needs to address land use and contain a land use map. The second part of it needs to contain implementing measures for those, for those land uses, such as zoning standards and regulations. The two aspects that make it unique, and what make it a specific plan, is that the specific plan will also address major public facilities, such as transportation, solid waste, energy, facilities that are intended to serve and meet the needs of the plan's overall vision. And then the last part is that the specific plan also includes a program for implementation, any type of public works projects that may be needed to implement the vision of the plan, including financing mechanisms, as well as cost analysis. So it's a really holistic and complete cookbook, if you will, that will come up with a vision and a whole implementing arm of it that tells us how to get and achieve these components that would be contained in the specific plan. Next slide, please. Maybe I have a control. Thank you. So as is indicated in the staff report and in the draft RFP, and based upon the information that staff received during the council's discussion at your strategic retreat when this objective first was conceived, staff put together eleven primary project objectives for the, for the downtown specific plan. And these objectives include, you know, first and foremost, a really robust public participation component. It also includes the objective of really creating an environment It also includes the objective of really creating an environment that is walkable and very much livable and celebrates the 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 best qualities of the downtown. And it also addresses issues and comes up with solutions that that are, you know, discussed amongst the community during the public participation component. It will focus on urban design and the public realm, recognizing that the streetscape is a big part of this plan that will be undertaken and really looking at how we will address and deal with the street closures that have been in place and how those become permanent or what those will become. And how we address, you know, downtown events and programming of the current existing parklets and future urban processes that could be part of this plan under a public realm and street statescape component. The plan will also address accessibility and mobility. Like I mentioned before, it will have goals and policies and a whole urban design component that is addressing the streetscape, including unifying elements and visual enhancements that would need to be made, including making the pedestrian movement improved. It will also address public infrastructure and identifying needs to support community goals within the planned area. And this is long term, so it would be over 10 to 20 years. And and the other and the last is the implementation program. Again, looking at cost analysis and financing to address all of the new components of the vision, excuse me, the specific plan would contain. So in order to do this, staff is recommending the proposed scope of work. It consists of 10 primary tasks. And the first task is to create a community engagement strategy. And one of the unique things or different things that we're doing in this particular plan that we're proposing is to create a downtown advisory committee. That will consist of anywhere from seven to about 15 members maximum. There would be extra participation by all of the council committees and commissions and possible representation on the advisory committee. One aspect that I did want to share, since I'm on this topic of community engagement, is that when we had staff met with the city council downtown advisory committee, it was recommended that we work with the consultants on coming up with the composition of the downtown advisory committee, which would then be something that we would take to council early on to get approval for. And and of course, the council would be involved in interviewing the applicants and, you know, the community members that are applying to be part of this advisory committee. So that would be something that we wouldn't kick off now, but we would wait until the consultants are on board and work with them to come up with the composition. The other thing that needs to be done is a very thorough and robust existing conditions analysis. This includes existing conditions and information gathering from our current plans, including any new plans that have recently been adopted, taking a look, doing a lot of reconnaissance in the area and developing a report on our existing conditions. The the scope of work would also include two concept plan alternatives. Because there's a lot to look at and it's very detailed approach, and there's going to be a lot of ideas that are coming out of the community conversation that we have, we feel it's really important to come up with two different alternatives that we can there, that we can then share with the decision-making bodies and get approval and consensus on which alternative or perhaps a blend of alternatives we want to go with. The scope of work also includes preparation of infrastructure development, of an infrastructure development and services plan. It includes public review of the of the draft specific plan, preparation of a final draft specific plan, an environmental clearance, and then, of course, public hearings with the planning commission of the city council, and then preparation of the final specific plan document. The overall timeline, as as identified in the strategic council, excuse me, the strategic goal, as shown in attachment one to the staff report, is a is an anticipation. An orbit of time for a specific plan usually takes about two years to do. And with within that timeframe, the plan is to release, upon council authorization, release the request for proposals this month, receive submittals in January, get approval from council of the selected consultant in February, and then in March, kick off the project. And then beginning from March 2022 to March 2024, the project would ensue and then be completed. But as Al mentioned earlier, during discussions with the city council downtown advisory committee, there was discussion about what staff can do to sort of speed up the process and is there any way to reduce the timeframe from 24 to 21 months? So that is something that we would be working on with the consultants to talk about the feasibility and potential costs associated with reducing the timeline to 21 months. So what we would like to discuss with the council this evening is to confirm a couple of things with you. We recognize that there's a lot in the RFP to consider. There's the project objectives, there's the scope. But as Al mentioned, and one of the things that we did want to focus your attention on is the study area boundary. We really would like confirmation from the council that we're, that we are addressing the boundaries, the appropriate boundaries for the downtown specific plan. And we would also like to confirm the council's, you know, feelings about having a an advisory committee approached with anywhere from seven to 15 members from our community being on that advisory committee. And then again, just confirming the overall project timing and wanting to make sure that we are, do have your support to to get this done in a way that works best for the city and under the timing that the council has identified. And with that, I think that concludes our presentation. And as Al mentioned, both of us are here to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, questions from council? All right, Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lisa and Al, thanks for the presentation and for the thoroughness on the on the RFP. I guess, so I don't know that have specific questions. I guess one comment I would make just from the subcommittee standpoint, I think in terms of the timing perspective, is the reason that we looked at kind of narrowing the size of the area was so that it would be something that we could be done, could be done in a shorter timeframe. Because I think we felt if we bid off the whole, all of Laurel, we would sort of get, would take a lot longer to do. So that would be just one thought on that. I don't, I don't have any specific questions other than that. I had a couple, I don't know if we're to answer the questions that Lisa posed. I'm happy to do that, or I can hold that off till later, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Rack. Why don't we take questions first and then we'll just go through the regular procedure for discussion. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start by thanking staff and also our downtown subcommittee for all of their hard work in getting us to this point. I'm really excited tonight to have the opportunity to discuss this RFP. My first question is regarding the use of a specific plan. You know, I, I too am a little bit concerned of this process taking two years. It seems long, and I understand that there's a lot of specific things that we need to tackle with this. But I remember when the mayor and I were on the East Side Visioning Plan process that we kind of talked about a lot of different plans and the pros and cons. And I'm just wondering if that process happens in this committee as well? And why a specific plan was chosen as the vehicle for this study?
I think I can try and answer that, Madam Mayor. That's okay. Thank you for the question. So a specific plan, one of the huge benefits of a specific plan, once you complete it, you will have certainty in terms of what needs to be done based on what the community's interests are. If it's an infrastructure change, like if you want to rebuild your sidewalks or you want to, you know, close a street, you will have all the analysis and and the decisions that need to be made around that in terms of the cost and how to do it, how to implement those changes and exactly what changes you want to make and the community wants to make in the downtown in a more detailed form so that you can actually get these things done, get them built. You can, you figure out where the funding is going to come from and, and, you know, how the city's going to go about doing it. It also gives you analysis of traffic and traffic flow. If you're, if you're going to look at closing streets or changing the configuration of the streets and sidewalks, it shows you what can happen. It'll give you a lot of different looks at, you know, the different actions and options that you have based on the mobility in the downtown. It allows you to look at urban design and even the zoning, the look and feel of the downtown. And what it does at the end, it'll give you a document that you can implement that's very clear and it signals not only to the community that this, we've heard you and here's exactly what we're going to do and how we're going to do it, but it'll signal it to the marketplace too. So that if you want investment in, you know, the facades and you want improvement in your downtown over the long term, you will have a plan that can be executed to do that. And and then it'll be recognized by state law, by local, your local zoning code. It will incorporate it into your local code. And so it's really everything you need to get what you and the community want done. As opposed to something like a vision plan, which is more of a policy document. And and I mean, it really worked well for for what it was used for, for the East Side. But we had a lot of momentum and it was kind of more, the evolution of that area was much more advanced. This, we're trying to find out exactly what people want to do, what you want to do and how to do it. And so we believe that the specific plan will give you the best tools to be able to execute on your vision.
Thank you, Al. Madam Mayor, I have two more questions. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. They're they're shorter, I think. In the deliverables for each phase, as I was reading through the RFP, I see that there's downtown, the DTAC meetings and community workshops. But one thing that seemed to be missing to me are check-ins with the downtown subcommittee. Was that something that was decided against or could that be added in? I'm just, I'm worried that there's a little disconnect between the the council and this plan.
No, no, that can be added. The intent was there, it just didn't make it into the wording of the document, but it should be there.
Okay, thanks, Al. And then my third question, I guess I just wanted to dive a little deeper into the downtown advisory committee. I know that other cities have used that formula as a way to really have some really good engagement with the community. And I guess my question is, is the council involved in, you know, determining the application process? Is that, was that a process like how we would appoint commissioners or we would have a say in who gets appointed? Or how do you, how do you see that working?
Well, you can do it a couple of different ways. And what staff is suggesting is that the city council be in charge of the selection of the people, very similar to what you would do for your other commissions and committees. And you would also set forth the different positions. And we can show you a slide, maybe if we forward a little bit in the presentation. We have a slide that gives you a feeling of the kinds of representation that you might consider. This was the General Plan Advisory Committee for the City of San Carlos back in 2009. And you can see the different types of representatives, stakeholders throughout the community. And this is just a representation of the potential types of folks that you can have from your various stakeholder groups in your community. So the intent was for the city staff to help you and, you know, provide you with the information and help you conduct those interviews and get it all set up for you and then work with you to determine who those stakeholders should be. And then you would do the interview process and select those those folks. You could also delegate this to the city staff, but that's, so that's the other option.
Okay, thank you. Lots to think about. Thanks, Al. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, it's nice to see our thinking on downtown progressing and potentially accelerating here. And it's good to see this effort. Thank you. And appreciate the effort of staff and and our downtown subcommittee, who I know is, you know, there's a lot to think about here for sure. I guess my my first question is really, I really do want to understand the Phase One, Phase Two. You know, I've been involved in kind of big projects in my life and it seems like the planning is what you want to be all encompassing. And then maybe the implementation gets phased, you know, budgetary or time-wise. You know, it is kind of a question mark to me why we wouldn't want the whole thing planned. So it makes me want to really understand what this Phase Two would look like. Is that another specific plan, which would take another two and a half years? And another advisory committee and 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 really, and another million dollars? And really repeating all this again three years from now? Is that what Phase Two would look like?
Yes, it could potentially if that's the, if it's the same tool that you want to use for that first phase. You could do the first phase and then say, well, we we liked that process, it worked and what we got out of it is valuable and we want to repeat that process for this other area. Or you could say that, no, we want to do a different type of plan, more like a vision plan or or something like we did with the East Side. So the Phase Two, it could be whatever you wanted it to be based on your experience in Phase One. However, many cities do, when they're looking at their downtown, because it has such an important placemaking and connection to the community, most cities want to do the specific plan because it's the most comprehensive kind of plan you can do. And it, you know, it lasts for so long and it can be implemented and that kind of thing like I talked about earlier. Why don't we scroll back to, if you could, Crystal, if you have control, back to the the map that we showed? And it shows both, there we go, right there. So that shows the white boundary there would be Phase One and the yellow would be Phase Two. So those are the two areas. And one of the other considerations here is it is long, Laurel Street's a long street. And if you, you know, honestly, if you're going to go to the historic core and do some shopping, what's the likelihood that you're going to walk all the way down to Free Pigs or something like that? I mean, it's a very, very long corridor. And if you, when you walk it, and as you all know, really, when you start to look at it, the the characteristics of these two areas are very different. And the stakeholders are different if you look at what's around it. So one of the things that planners do and staff does is you look at kind of what are the edge conditions? And you can see there's single-family residential along Walnut Speed and Laurel. And though that constituency, those stakeholders are, it's sort of a different group than you would have maybe in and around the historic core. So it's kind of separating out very unique physical characteristics and also the different stakeholder groups that you'll be talking to in both those phases. So they're very, they really are different in a number of ways.
But then Al, so there's no such thing as amending a specific plan or like stretching it, the the same thinking further into the city? It would have to be a brand new from scratch. I mean, you're saying there might be good reason to do it brand new and from scratch, but there is no option just to extend a specific plan in a shorter type process?
What you would do, I mean, I think what you would do is if you wanted to do Phase One and Phase Two at the same time, you could do that. That's that's option number one. If you only did Phase One and later on you said, wait a minute, we missed the area, you could amend the boundaries of that specific plan to incorporate a new block or a new area of the city. So you can amend your specific plan anytime you want.
And I guess, I mean, is that, I mean, so just to play it out, if we added Phase Two and 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 I would, you know, I think we should also discuss if if our boundary should go a little further should go a little further um, west on San Carlos Avenue as well, perhaps tying in our municipal center and the city hall park a bit as well. Um, I don't know if that was looked at or considered, but um, i- 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 if we did that all holistically, I mean, this is just the planning, this is not the implementation anyway, this is just the planning. If we did that, I mean, uh, you know, does that slow this down dramatically?
Um, I mean, if you added a couple of blocks around um, phase one, it wouldn't slow it down significantly and, and um, any downtown plan, no matter the boundary, is going to be uh, you know, it, it's a lot of work. Um, you, you will want to have a very robust community engagement process and, and if you do have an advisory committee, that's like another commission. And so a lot of work and a lot of time and effort goes into this, a lot of care and thoughtful consideration. Um, so, I mean, no matter what, if you're going to do this, you know, if you're going to do a downtown plan, you might as well spend the time and effort and, you know, be thoughtful about it like you want to be. Um, so, I mean, two years is about what a downtown plan is gonna, is going to take in just about any community. We can look at trying to speed that up with our consultants and see if there's ways to do that. But with any robust um, with any robust community engagement program like this, it's, it takes extra time.
Okay, thank you, Al. And then just last question, this can be brief, but uh, so, you know, I like the concept of advisory uh, committee and I appreciate seeing um, you know, the various constituencies and how that can be divided up. I mean, it, it, you know, it's already some specific stakeholders and, and, and that sounds great. So that, that makes me uh, you know, more supportive of the idea to understand it that way. But uh, what, what has our, you know, uh, experience with advisory committees like that been? And, you know, are there pros and cons to it? Are there things we should be thinking about on both sides of that? Or is that just a, you know, a flat staff recommendation for a project like this?
Well, it's, it's beneficial in a lot of different ways, um, but you don't have to do it that way. It's a way of reaching um, really deep into stakeholder groups and, and really getting those people engaged in like, for instance, if you have somebody from the Rotary Club, those folks will go back to the Rotary Club and tell their hundred members that, you know, what they're doing and, and what's happening. And so you really reach deeply into the community when you have these representatives because they go out and they talk about it to all these other groups of people. So that's one of the big benefits of this. Um, and our experience, for instance, with the general plan advisory committee was, was very, very good. Um, at the end of it, you know, they, they did a trem, and they do a tremendous amount of work. As all the, all the council subcommittees know in your work on the subcommittees, you put in a tremendous amount of time on this and they will too. And so um, it takes a little bit of the pressure off the other commissions and committees because you get, if, if you can get consensus on this broad group of individuals that represent so many parts of our community, uh, if you can get that consensus throughout the process, boy, you, you've got a plan that you can do something with at the end. And so our experience with the general plan advisory committee is that we, we were able to do that. We were able to get consensus on the general plan. And so by the time it did get to the city council at that time, uh, it, it was approved pretty, pretty easily because of that community buy-in. Um, but again, you don't have to do it that way. You can use your commissions as the sounding board as opposed to using a technical advisory committee like this. Um, you can just have your public hearings and study sessions and that's been very effective. That's the way we did it with the east side vision plan and we were able to do that plan in nine months uh, within budget. So there's, there's a, you know, a couple of different ways to do it.
Yeah, thank you, Al. That's very helpful. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, so I don't see any other hands up, so I have a couple of questions, Al. Um, so um, first off, you know, thank you. I know, um, I think it was when uh, Adam and Sarah and I were first seated on council, this idea came up and it's nice to see that it's finally come uh, you know, to be a reality. We had other priorities that preceded this, but um, the time is now. And I think the pandemic, right? And uh, kind of the, the way that we're using downtown has definitely evolved um, and will likely in the future. So um, very exciting to see this come, come to the fore. Um, speaking of um, you know, the pandemic and um, the Laurel Street closure, um, the, the question I have is, you know, a lot of um, it's sort of a two-part question. So the first one is, um, there are, you know, what, what I observed is that there's some wear and tear with respect, for example, to the um, some of the parklets because of the weathering, right? We've had some rain. Um, and there's been some other concerns expressed about um, kind of the, the short-term nature of that um, particular program. So I'd like to understand kind of what uh, parallel work will be done around the temporary street closure? Because I do see that in this one, we're going to be envisioning potentially longer-term um, uh, closure of the streets. Um, and then the second piece is, is you can imagine some of the business owners in the other areas like uh, south of Laurel as well as industrial arts um, are wanting um, some attention paid and resources applied uh, to their particular business districts. And so, you know, what are the options, Al, uh, for, you know, parallel pathing alongside the downtown planning exercise? Um, uh, making sure that we uh, you know, take care for, you know, the temporary street program as well as tending to some of the other business districts.
Okay. Um, with regard to the temporary issues, uh, we've been having an ongoing dialogue with the downtown subcommittee and the subcommittee meets fairly regularly with uh, various department heads, police, fire, uh, public works is, is taking a leadership role in that, the city manager's office. And so that's kind of an ongoing effort and it's uh, something that um, staff um, considers to be just part of the regular work that we do with the downtown subcommittee and the council. So um, if the downtown subcommittee wants to meet or if the council wants to um, charge us with uh, continuing on and, and making sure that things look good and, and things are safe down there, that's how I think we intended to continue to work with uh, the temporary issues uh, until the plan is completed. And um, I think maybe uh, this public works director may be here this evening and he can talk to that if, if need be. Um, so that's an ongoing effort and we, we assume that we will continue on um, addressing those issues. With regard to the other areas of the city like the industrial arts or south of Laurel area, um, during this um, specific plan or this plan, it would be good for those areas to, to watch what happens and, and continue to be engaged and involved in terms of, you know, finding out what's happening. We will certainly be doing a lot of outreach to the broader community with newsletters and um, other kinds of media to try and make sure that people are informed. Um, but they can kind of watch how it goes and we anticipate planning efforts in those areas because of your interest, because of their interest uh, in the future. And so that's one thing that, that they could do. Uh, and we will continue to engage with, with the folks in both those areas and other areas in cities like we have historically. Um, and with regard to some of the ongoing efforts that we're doing with small businesses, um, I know that um, our economic development staff has been working with local businesses and so Judy, I believe, is here this evening. Um, she could touch upon some of the things that we've done with um, these new applications that we're, we're partnering with uh, the county of San Mateo uh, to help our local small businesses and other things like that. So we're um, continuing on with those programs um, as a matter of course of, of business.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. All right, it looks like Stephen Machida, Public Works Director, uh, has his video on. Stephen, did you want to make any comments?
So yes, just to add a little bit on uh, in regards to the industrial arts uh, district. Actually, I, I have had the opportunity to speak with him on member occasion, in fact, just recently, last Thursday. And what uh, what we've really decided is kind of, kind of to maybe have a quarterly meeting with them, you know, to make that determination of what can the city do, kind of some of the improvements in the interim, whether it's like additional striping or refreshing striping, refreshing curb paint, perhaps um, identifying certain errors that we might be able to do. Um, I think council is well aware of a little uh, trash receptacles that we had solved here. This was, I believe it was two years ago. But, you know, just maybe making some additional improvements as, as well as working with PG&E uh, to try some uh, identify holes that we could add additional street lighting to, you know, just to kind of make some of the, some of the improvements that, you know, we could help them a little bit as we kind of go through the process of looking through at the downtown and, and just, um, so we, we run these improvements or, you know, some of these improvements in, in parallel to what, what's really happening in downtown. In regards to the temporary parklets, you know, certainly, um, I think we would all agree that the, all the temporary parklets have been really successful. I don't think anybody really envisioned that they would go, you know, um, about, you know, a year and a half already and, and by the time, September of twenty twenty-two, it's, it's a little over two years. And so a- as Al has indicated, I think, you know, there, there is opportunity. We do regular inspections for safety as it relates to, you know, some of the uh, heaters uh, and then just some of the secure. But certainly if, you know, some of these uh, temporary par- parklets do need to be refreshed for whatever reason, that is something that we probably will have to have discussions with um, ERs of the parklets.
Right, thank you. All right, and then um, just to kind of wrap this up, just to go back a little bit. Uh, so one retailer, um, service provider reached out to me and asked that maybe we potentially consider an equitable program for them where s- spaces are reserved. So I know that we implemented the, the, the CSO uh, for enforced parking enforcement, um, but I've been informed that that's not uh, really working. Uh, they're still seeing that spaces occupied well beyond the time limit. And um, would, as part of this consideration for the downtown plan, um, would there be consideration given to um, kind of equitable type um, amenities, if you will, to the service and retail providers like a dedicated parking spot uh, similar to um, for example, the restaurants getting space in front of their properties? For park?
Yeah, I mean, um, parking programs and things like that can be considered um, as well in the plan, yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I actually wanted to build on something that the mayor um, questioned earlier. Um, and it has to do with um, the, the street closure because I know that the governor has extended the state of emergency, I believe, through March, but in June, the council voted to keep the street closed through September. And um, back in June, I had mentioned that some communities were looking into the pedestrian mall act. And I'm just wondering, and maybe this is a question for the city attorney or maybe for Al, what work has been done in the last five months to bring forward options to the council to keep the street closed in this medium term in between, you know, now and the two-year-long process plus probably some construction down the road? I mean, we're looking at a fairly long runway for this plan. So um, what are the thoughts that are, that are going to be brought forward to the council?
Uh, thank you, um, Vice Mayor. Um, I, I, I have um, done some research on the, the two avenues that are available to council regarding the um, for permanent street closure and uh, after the temporary emergency is over. Um, the vehicle code allows us to completely close the street if the council makes a finding that um, the street is no longer necessary for um, for purposes of circulation. Um, and that requires some lead-up work that I think that Al's been working on as far as um, planning and review and information and regarding traffic and, you know, issues that we would be facing. The second is this pedestrian mall act that nineteen sixty that we brought up before. Um, that's a longer process, but the factual findings are very similar in, in that, so we wouldn't be duplicating that effort. Um, the finding that you need to make is that um... The finding that needs to be made is uh... That the, the area is um, no longer needed for traffic circulation, a very similar finding. But that, that finding, um, we have to support that finding with evidence, so that's where the, the study is going to come into play. The pedestrian mall act is a little better in some ways because it gives you more flexibility in how you want to structure the closure because it, um, under the vehicle code twenty-one one oh one, it's just the question isn't up or down, are we closing the street or are we opening? There's no exception, it's just you're essentially abandoning the use of public street. While the pedestrian mall act has provisions for, for um, limited uses or time-limited uses, then it gives you a little more flexibility on how you want to structure the, the, the mall. For, uh, for example, you could have it um, open for um, deliveries, you could have it open for um, for special events, you can have it open temporarily to allow for um, other uses other than the mall. And it, it, the issue though is, it hasn't, it has a procedure in it that requires a public hearing and it has, there's some budgetary impacts that we would have to deal with as far as um, reserving funds for claims and... And other um, access issues if you will. Um, so we would, we would um, before we, before you made the resolution of intention to, to establish the mall, in order to make that finding, we would, we would want to do some studying so you, so all the information that could be included in it um, that are required by the statute could be there. And that would all be required before you, you met the public. Also, I think I mentioned this the last time we talked about, this is a sequel issue. Um, the California Environmental Quality Act would probably consider the creation of a pedestrian mall project, so we would have to do some environmental review um, at, at an appropriate level. It could be a mitigated negative declaration, but it could also be a VRL.
Okay, I, I appreciate that information, Greg. I guess I'm just um, you know, if this is something that the council needs to be working on, um, given the direction and the vote that we already took to keep the street closed till September, um, this is something that we should be tackling now. And, you know, we took this vote back in June and it's November. So I'm just, I'm a little surprised that this hasn't been brought to us or I don't know, maybe it's been something that the downtown subcommittee has discussed, but um, I would strongly encourage us to consider bringing this forward in the new year for discussion if that's what needs to happen. That's it, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rapp.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And uh, thank you, Vice Mayor, for raising that question. Um, I guess my question is for Greg then on that. So given the two scenarios that you've, you've provided and since we're sort of behind the eight ball on this um, at this point, what is the fastest path for us to get something done to have a vote on permanent closure then of the downtown?
Uh, you know, I'm not, I think the fat, the, I think the faster path is probably the, the, the limited question of just a permanent closure, but I'm not sure that's what's the most um, desirable approach um, from, from all the aspects of what we would be, be to be dealing with. The, the sequel review is going to drive the, the permanent closure in either case because we'd have to study the impact on traffic and, and um, and those types of issues. The good news is, we probably have some data points now, given that we've had a temporary closure for a while on, on what's happening. So we would, we definitely would need to have um, some sort of level of traffic study that would, while we've got it temporarily closed to, to be able to um, have the data to say that there's not a significant environmental impact from, um, from the closure. Uh, it's, the closure, I mean, if, if it's just one block that you're considering, that's one thing. If it's, if it's, if it's a larger closure, that, you know, that might implicate some other factors, but I, I, my understanding is that the thought was, and from the downtown subcommittee, the thought is to look at the seven hundred block only um, as a, as an appropriate closure. But you might want to, when you look at the, the, the information, you might decide that something else is more desirable um, or, or the, or the feedback that you get from the public about what they prefer. Um, so I, I would say that the, the... Um, so I, I would say that the, the other issue is, I, I mean, I think we're, we're also trying to deal with that possible ex- uh, expiration of the, of the um, declaration of emergency um, to, to make the findings that we can continue to keep it closed now while we're studying it, for example, instead of making the more irrevocable type of a decision. Because a temporary closure is a different animal than a permanent closure. So we're looking at that as well.
So just.
So could, can I, can I just interject real quick? So Greg, I just want to check in with you. We're, we're starting to move away from, it feels like discussion about the R F P and talk about permanent closure of Laurel Street. So are we still within the bounds of um, agenda um, discussion here? I just want to double check.
Uh, I think, I think we probably went as far as we could on that subject, but I think it was, it's, it's part of the, the R F P, I think, talking about that street closure. So I, I thought.
Yeah, I just want, I just want to make sure that we're staying within the bounds. So, okay, I think it, um, so I, um, go ahead, Councilmember Rack.
Uh, as long as it's, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just quickly, just Greg as a follow-up. If um, that irrevocable, just to understand that irrevocable closure, could, could it then be amended and do the uh, pedestrian mall act as a follow-up? Can, I mean, can we ever change that? Or is it, I mean, assume anything can be changed at some point, right? We could go, we decided to open the street back up again and revoke that.
Yeah, yes, I, I think that's definitely possible. You just go through the, the, the initial process.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Greg.
All right. Councilmember Dugan, and, and then I think we uh, maybe go to a public comment.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And Greg, I appreciate the overview of the long process to permanently close the street. Uh, but that, that would be part of the specific plan, right? I mean, I think what would be before us perhaps next summer would be a continuation of a temporary closure until we complete that specific plan. Um, i- isn't that right? And that's a lot simpler review and something we've, a step we've already taken, correct?
Correct. We're, we're, we are doing the environmental review for the continuation of the temporary closure right now. Um, and that, that environmental review is geared towards extending the temporary closure, but not using the declaration of emergency as a basis for it. But using the um, policy of least power in the city.
Okay, thank you. So all that talk on the complexity of a permanent closure, that's part of this R F P in our specific plan process. So we have time for that.
Yeah, and that study would help support those effective decisions as well. But yeah, I didn't need to uh, comp- over, over the complicated, somewhat complicated issue, but there, there is this interim step that we've been looking for.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And Jeff, I see you took your video on what's.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of summarize this because it is a complicated situation. And just for folks who are, are sort of tuning in, because it's the downtown and I know how important it is to everybody. So in the, uh, the, the short-term decision was to keep this, keep downtown closed. But we recognized, and the council recognized when they were doing that, that it was based on basically the governor's emergency declaration. And as such, that could go away at any time and, and there wouldn't be anything that we would be able to do about it. So we recognized that we wanted to do a long-term plan, but that's a lengthy process. And so we could get caught in between being done with our, our long-term plan and the governor's declaration going away. So what would that interim process look like? And so that's why um, back in June, at the council's direction, the staff started work on the necessary E I R and documentation so that we could meet that legal um, threshold that would allow the council to essentially create an interim or medium-term permanent closure in advance of whatever a permanent plan would be. So I, in a nutshell, that's as simplified as I can make a com- complex issue. But, but we are well underway on uh, having that um, uh, back for you. So that um, if the governor's declaration should go away, we could continue with the downtown closure uh, until whatever time you make some permanent plans for the downtown.
Right, thank you, Jeff. All right, uh, Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment?
No, there are no hands for this item.
Okay. All right, uh, let's move to uh, council comment and discussion. Who'd like to start off? Councilmember Rack and then Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I just want to follow up, I think, on the questions that Lisa asked about the scoping. Um, and then I meant ask you to remind me about those. Or maybe if you can put those questions up would be helpful. So if that's kind of what we're going to discuss. Um, so I, yes, I think El Camino should be included in the study area. And yes, I think, given the timing, I, I would prefer that the southern boundary be Britton Avenue. Um, I did want to add it. I uh, was going to make this at this point, but I'm glad John raised the question of maybe including the civic center area and a little bit more of the uh, St. Carlos Avenue. As part of that, I'd be in favor of sort of expanding that area, maybe from Cherry up and around where the adult community center is and around. And perhaps over into the, where C V S is in that area, since that is uh, I think sort of part of that uh, potential area. Uh, I, I'm certainly supportive of the, I, I like the idea of the advisory committee. And um, in timing, I mean, for me, I'd like to get this done as soon as possible. And I think the, you know, why, why keeping the scope a little bit smaller, I think that sort of allows for that to, to happen. Um, and so I think that's, those are my, my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Collins and then Councilmember Dugan.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to throw my thought, put my thoughts in. Um, the question was raised earlier about um, you know, the check-ins with the downtown subcommittee. I believe that's going to be baked in. Uh, we're going to want to know um, what the progress is as it goes along. So I, I, I can't see that those meetings with Adam and myself would uh, would not be part of this process. And because we're going to want to monitor. Um, the second thing, on the advisory committee, which I'm, I'm fully in support of. I go, public input's going to be really important along the way. Uh, I think if we have a good advisory committee that we're representative of the community. Um, obviously, the community's been very supportive of this, of the closing for a long time. So I, I'm very much in favor of that. I also think it's good to have uh, two phases. You, you learn a lot from one phase. I'm, I'm worried that if we, we have an, you know, uh, overarching uh, specific plan, that we miss some things. We rush some things. We um, we don't have time to recover from mistakes. So I, I, I like a smaller scope because it allows us to keep our focus. And we can then learn from that. That kind of provides us with a roadmap on, on where to go next. So. And the other thing is, is that the, in phase two, for lack of a better term, I think that's what we've been calling. It's a really distinctly different um, demographic, you know, um, from, from the downtown core. The downtown core is really unique, and I think we need to keep our focus on that. Um, and so, you know, there's just, I think when you expand the scope, you expand the variables. You also potentially uh, expand the, the timeline. And from what I've heard is um, this council wants a tighter timeline, and I don't think you can have both. You can't expand the project and have a shorter timeline. So if we're going to keep a, a, a tight timeline or a tighter timeline, uh, we, we need to control the scope of, of the project. I also don't want us to be uh, you know, prisoners to the timeline. If, if, if something needs more work, it needs more work. And, and we, we shouldn't ignore that. And we should make sure that um, that we do it right. You know, the old saying, there's never enough time to do it the right the first time. But then, then you end up doing it over and redo it, you know, right the second time. So I don't want us to make mistakes along those lines. Um, and I also am in favor of including El Camino in the study area. I think that just makes sense. Uh, and including the southern bound- boundary to be Britton, as, as we talked about in the subcommittee. I'm a little dubious, though, on expanding out to Elm Street and uh, the C V S area. If the rest of the council wants to go that way, so be it. Uh, again, I think we start to lose our focus. This is really, you know, uh, it's called the downtown subcommittee and for a reason. And if we're going to have a specific plan, it needs to be specific to that. So I worry that if we start expanding that, that scope, that uh, we start losing our focus. And, and it's not that. We couldn't include that with phase two later on. I, I like to deal with uh, smaller pieces. You know, uh, Al brought up the, the general pro- plan process, you know, ten, twelve years ago. That was really, you know, a, a Herculean effort. And this is going to be a big effort too. Um, having said that, I also want to pause just for a second and thank uh, Al and Lisa and, and Stephen and the rest of the staff for the work they've done so far. This is a huge project. It's going to, it's going to be a defining project for the city in the long term. So uh, I, I, I want us to get it right. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And uh, uh, thank you um, uh, Adam and Ron uh, for your, your thoughts and work on this. Um, and, and I, you know, uh, in principle, I really do agree with you, Ron, on, you know, let's not be a prisoner to this timeline. Let's get it right. Uh, let's make sure uh, things are fully considered. And, 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 and that's, that, that same notion is what leads me to think we really should have the full study area here. Uh, just in the sense of the sheer time and effort and expense of a specific plan. Um, you know, to, to think that, you know, we're going to tell South Laurel to just, you know, uh, wait patiently. Will we take, you know, three years, it seems, to even get the plan set for this? And then implementation would be, you know, probably another three years. So it would be six years before we would even consider kicking off, which would then probably be a million and a half dollar uh, specific plan uh, to, to, to cover Laurel. And, and so, you know, I, I, I would like us to uh, just at least discuss what it would mean. Uh, and, and even if it does slow it down a bit, um, you know, I think no matter what we do, we're going to find ourselves in that median, medium area where we lose the governor's declaration and we have to have that interim plan anyways. And I'm not sure it, it, it matters that much if, if that period, if the planning period takes an extra six months. If it can be all-inclusive. And then, and then we can phase the implementation. And that's where I think we can learn and adjust and, 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 you know, uh, make changes if need be. Once we have an all-inclusive specific plan for this area, during implementation, we can learn, we can adjust, we can modify. But we'll have that overarching framework uh, to work from. Um, so I, I, I guess I, I would like to have that conversation. Um, the easier ones, uh, El Camino absolutely uh, should be involved. I guess the story I'll tell quickly on that is, uh, when I first moved to the area, I lived in Palo Alto for three years and drove down El Camino, I don't know, dozen or more times, and never even realized St. Carlos had a downtown, uh, such a nice Laurel Street. And then one day, I think I met someone for lunch down there and I was like, wow, San Carlos is great. And I think I moved to town about six months later. Um, so uh, I love the idea that we'll include El Camino and, and whatever design language you're looking feel, we do adopt in our downtown, that we start extending that to El Camino. Because I do think a lot of people, you know, you can easily drive by and think we're similar to Belmont without that kind of great uh, downtown core. Uh, so I really do like that. Um, and I do appreciate uh, Al's uh, very thoughtful response on all the benefits and advisory committee, especially how those constituents go back and, and generate support and buy-in from their own uh, groups and organizations. Uh, so I firmly support the advisory committee approach as well. Thank you.
Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, okay, I'll start with the slide. I too agree that El Camino should be in the study area. Um, I would support the idea of expanding the boundary up St. Carlos Avenue, just from a streetscape perspective. And given that there is um, retail along there, I, I do consider, you know, quite a bit of St. Carlos Avenue to be also our downtown. Um, I don't know if I would put in whole-city blocks, but um, from a streetscape perspective, I think it makes a lot of sense to include St. Carlos Avenue a bit further. Um, I also want to make sure that the southern boundary area at Britton includes both sides of Britton. Um, and I, I definitely, I guess I'm, I'm on the fence about John's suggestion because um, you know, it is a very long and arduous process. And I, I do also, you know, feel for our South Laurel businesses who um, you know, feel forgotten a bit. And um, I guess I would be curious to hear what other council members feel about the phasing of the project. But um, I recognize that the northern part of Laurel Street involves a street closure and some kind of very complicating factors. So I understand that the two areas are different. But as John said, to have to restart the whole process in the advisory group, it just seems, it seems like a, just kind of redoing it again. Um, so I'm, I'm, I, I'm on the fence about that. Um, I wanted to say that I am willing to spend more money if that helps um, move the process along a bit faster. It might not, but um, I am willing to entertain that. I do like the advisory committee approach and the fact that the council can have um, a hand in that. So um, I think that's a great idea. Um, I also wanted to say that I'm a little bit concerned with the plan not being brought back to council to weigh in until a preferred concept is determined. And so I would be interested in having kind of a midpoint check-in, like we did with the housing element, uh, to give us a, a, a quick glimpse into how it is all going and how the alternatives are shaping up. Um, because uh, we have certainly been involved in this from the very beginning. So um, I also wanted to emphasize, and I see that this is in the plan, the need for improved pedestrian movement. Um, and paying extra attention to A D A accessibility. I think that these improvements um, serve those who travel by stroller and wheelchair. And it's um, just a real uh, benefit to make the downtown all ability-friendly. So I do want to make sure that we're um, conscious of that. Um, so I think I've answered all of the questions. I'm just, I'm very excited to get this project underway. Um, and um, and also getting to replace those downtown trees that are making our sidewalks so sticky. It's lo- long overdue for us to um, take a look at our downtown and make some improvements. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. And I see some additional hands up, but I'd like to take a, a whack at this since I haven't had a chance to comment yet. Um, so from, from my perspective, um, I, I'm in alignment that having an advisory committee um, makes a lot of sense, especially the way that Al described it, where uh, we get people appointed and they um, are, you know, the idea is that they, they serve a larger community and um, in that way. Um, I'd like to suggest that, you know, um, I, I like Vice Mayor McDowell's idea that council have an opportunity to, to weigh in on this. If um, we think she, well, she was, she asked the question at least. I'm assuming that she wants to have some input on this later. And assuming that's the case, I just would suggest that we also include um, a representative um, with families with young children. Um, to Sarah, Vice Mayor Sarah McDowell's points, right, about um, stroller access and uh, you know, what makes it easy to navigate downtown versus not. I think it'd be include, important to include members of the adult community center. They're, or um, um, uh, very important um, p- portion of our community. And I, I think they would have a lot, a lot to say as well about what they would like to see in the downtown and what's working for that community and what's not. Um, I didn't see the Chamber San Mateo County St. Carlos Working Group listed as one of the stakeholder groups. So I would like for them to be included. They, um, many of those members have a legacy, um, and they are small business owners. Um, I also would like um, representative uh, with people who are differently abled. People who have intellectual disabilities as well as mobility issues. Um, it was brought to my attention recently that there is a, a group home for people with in- intellectual disabilities that lives right around um, the corner from our downtown. And uh, they don't always necessarily feel welcome in our community. And um, I think if we were to adopt some ideas um, from universal design standards as we're thinking about our downtown. Um, we can make our downtown accessible um, to all um, all different types of people, right? With different um, abilities. Um, I'm hoping that there's also um, consideration given to representation from service clubs. I think you'd mentioned that, Al, as well as landlords, retailers, service providers, as well as restaurants. So, you know, if we take a look at the whole mix, um, um, I think that would be, that would be great. Um, I would, I would also suggest that we consider adding a fourth objective. I would, I would also suggest that we consider adding a fourth objective to the background on page three, that it kind of bakes in some of these ideas I just suggested. And that would be that we develop a plan that is inclusive of community members of all ages and abilities and different business types, retailers and service providers, that support a resilient and sustainable community that take into consideration the continual pressures from big box and online merchants. So I think one thing that, you know, really struck me as we moved through the pandemic is that there was multiple pressures placed on many of our businesses that I think are kind of threatening our, our community. In fact, I just heard from a business owner of one of our beloved stores that their rent is increasing and they're actually looking for another location. And this is a business that really is a community builder. So I'm just concerned about the ongoing threat there. I'd like us to be more specific with respect to mitigating traffic congestion and make sure that we can increase access for seniors, youth and young families and perhaps include in that traffic study the assessment of a shared transportation or mini shuttle that helps people get, for example, from, you know, different points in our community to, to the shopping district, from parking to the shopping district. You know, if this site-specific plan would include policy statements similar to the visioning document that we just went through, I think it would be important to comment on the fact that we want to retain our much-loved mom and pop shops in an era when rents are rising and are being forced to actively seek new space outside the city, as per my previous comments. And I know that we recently launched a program, a pilot program around the Shop Local app. If we could think about ways that we can support all of our businesses. So again, for example, we know the restaurants, you know, that the open outdoor dining has been a lifesaver for them. Some of the other service and retailers are not feeling the same equity coming from the city in terms of benefit. So if we could also consider, you know, what would be some analogous benefits that we can offer the service retailers? That I think that would be really helpful. So those are just some additional thoughts and suggestions that I have. So yes, on the advisory committee, I'd like to expand the membership and have that reflected in the document. I'm in agreement that we include El Camino Real and just make sure that it coincides with the housing element update because I know that there's been some exploration there with respect to housing. I, I'm in alignment, obviously, going down to Britton. I'm intrigued by Vice Mayor Sarah McDowell's idea around San Carlos Avenue and the streetscape. I share her concern around including whole blocks between the downtown area and that portion. I also appreciate Vice Mayor McDowell's idea around the midpoint check-in and obviously pedestrian movement. And then the trees with respect to that, I think if there's low-hanging fruit, again, that we can accommodate and take care of between now and that process, perhaps we do so without having to go through the environmental impact report process. And as it concerns the Phase Two portion, which is South Laurel, what's resonating with me about what Councilmember Collins said was just the fact that that portion is just so very different. And there's just, you know, a whole nother set of businesses. So I like the idea of a hyper-focus on that downtown core with maybe including the streetscape of the San Carlos Avenue blocks that are very close to there. I think what worked about the Eastside Innovation District Visioning Plan was the fact that it was a very like set of, of, you know, circumstances and that were contiguous in nature. And so we were able to really focus on that. But I think if we go further south from Britton, we get into some, you know, very different issues that might muddy the waters a little bit. So I'd be comfortable keeping it at Britton. So that's my laundry list of things. Councilmember Collins, and then we'll go to Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify a little bit about what I meant about breaking this project up because I think that there's this thought that we're, they're going to be separate silos that we're going to have this project. We create Phase One, we're all done, then we start all over again and create Phase Two. I don't think there's any reason why the things we're learning along the way can't be laying the groundwork for the second phase. They can be instructive as we go along. We can be putting together the, you know, the outline of it or the bones of it as, as, you know, so to speak. So that when it comes to that point, and who knows when that'll be, but whenever it comes, we've really got a well-developed plan in progress. And so, you know, you can hit the ground running, so to speak. It won't be that much more difficult to finish out the second phase because we all have already done the hard work on the first phase. And like I said, as the mayor reiterated, the fact that they are very different, I think along the way, I don't see why staff can't be working along two tracks and keeping the second phase in line. So the other thing I wanted to say is that while I think both Adam and I feel that, you know, keeping the downtown subcommittee involved with check-ins, I also think that it's also part of the process that we want to make sure that we're checking in with the rest of the council in public so that, you know, there's the, I don't want to call it a midpoint. I wanted a periodic point check-in so that we're getting input from the rest of the council. And if it looks like maybe things aren't going in the direction that the rest of the council wants, or if they see something happening that we hadn't previously anticipated, we want to get that feedback. So I'm entirely on board with, with that as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thanks for everyone's comments. And I just want to add my support for yes, having the check-ins with the council as well. I had that on my list, my scribbles here, and I missed raising that. So thank you for those who did. So I think that's, that's helpful and the downtown subcommittee to work on that as well. And I do think maybe, and I answer sort of the, some of the discussion and Ron's sort of final point about, you know, maybe we can ask staff to try to make the transition to that Phase Two as seamless as possible over time. And maybe there can be some, some sort of parallel path that happen throughout that process. And I'd certainly, if more funding is needed to do some of that, I'd certainly be willing to look at that as Vice Mayor McDowell mentioned. And then I think I'm flexible in terms of, I mentioned sort of the Civic Center area to expand. But if we wanted, however we think is appropriate, whether as, as was mentioned, sort of the streetscape along San Carlos Avenue, I'm flexible in that. I think just sort of adding a little bit more and expanding a little bit on that to cover some of those areas would be, would be useful. But I sort of defer to staff on that in terms of how that looks.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Rack. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate everyone's comments. I mean, I think Al did mention that Phase Two would be another whole specific plan and like another million dollars, just, just to point that out. But so on San Carlos Avenue, yeah, thank you, Sarah. That, that's really was all I intended when I brought it up, was really the streetscape. When I think about the downtown plan, I think we're, you know, talking about kind of the design language for the city and how people feel that it's continuous and, and, you know, connected. And that's what led me to think that, you know, having it extend down San Carlos Avenue, and I would say to Chestnut Street, so that the Civic Center, the Senior Center, City Hall Park are kind of connected into our core with that similar design language. So yeah, I'm, I'm just talking about extending to Chestnut on the streetscape-type design activities or, you know, if that implies anything beyond streetscape, you know, I would trust staff to, to work that in appropriately. But I certainly wasn't talking about whole blocks down San Carlos Avenue, just, just the streetscape. And then I would just ask, with that same thought of, you know, it's a design language. It connects areas to areas and makes it feel like a contiguous downtown. I guess I would ask, maybe we could do the same thing for one block down Laurel to Greenwood, where we just look at extending the streetscape so that, you know, when someone is being introduced to San Carlos, they immediately recognize, oh, the downtown keeps going because it's the same, you know, design language, whether that's lamps or, you know, whatever, whatever it ends up being, more greenery, et cetera. It just feels connected. And at least in that way, South Laurel doesn't feel completely left out of this or left behind. And, you know, they have something that connects them back to this new and improved downtown and, you know, keeps us all thinking of it as, you know, we consider the Phase Two downstream.
Okay, thank you. All right, any, Vice Mayor McDowell?
I'll just quickly say I do support Councilmember Dugan's suggestion that we continue some streetscape on the other side of Britton as well. Because I, I think if Britton, you know, is one of the thoroughfares coming into town, you look right and it looks really beautiful and you look left and it looks like it hasn't been touched, then, you know, you don't, you probably wouldn't turn left. So I, I agree that, I think that's a great idea to just try and transition it a little bit, at least. I think that's probably the least we could do. So, thank you.
Councilmember Rack?
I'd be okay with that too. I'd agree with that.
Thank you. Okay, so I just want to check in with Al and Lisa and make sure that you're, feel like your questions have been answered and you are clear on the input that you've received.
I think we are. Lisa?
Yes, I agree. I took extensive notes and I captured everything, including all of the mayor's comments as well. I know you have quite a long list, but I did get those. So, thank you.
I could repeat them if you want.
I'm good. Thank you.
There were good thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Rack.
For your, yeah, your guidance.
All right, okay. So, all right, any, any further discussion at this point? All right, I think we could take a motion at this time?
Madam Mayor, I move to authorize the release of the request for proposals to implement the city council's strategic goal for downtown San Carlos.
I'll second.
Do we need to include that the streetscape boundary will, will be extended to Chestnut and to Greenwood?
Sure, I can do that. Including the extension of the streetscape boundary through to Chestnut along San Carlos Avenue and to Greenwood along Laurel Street.
I continue to second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, I just want to, you know, just kind of one last remark on this. I just, again, I'm, I'm really pleased that we finally got to this point. I think it signals a tremendous amount of work on other projects that came before it that were also very large in nature. And, you know, we've often talked about the fact that Laurel Street is really the living room of San Carlos. Many of us have echoed that idea. It's, you know, a place of where community comes together to celebrate and connect with one another. And I think this is an important step for us as we move into the future to make sure that it stays that living room for San Carlos and continues to help support and build our community. So, you know, thank you, Councilmember Rack, for, you know, continuing to push this. I think this was your initial idea many, many years ago. And I thank you for your patience as we work through some other issues in the city.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, so I think we can take roll call, Crystal?
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma-Lohan?
Yes. All right, that takes us to item 10A, agenda setting. Items discussed in this agenda section will be considered by the council for placing, placing on a future agenda. No action on these items will be taken at this meeting. We have item A, consideration of agendizing an item to consider year-round lighting in the downtown.
Madam Mayor, that's my item, so if you're okay with that, I'll give a quick explanation. Thank you. I just, over the last year during the pandemic, you know, when the lights were up at, at the holidays and beyond, I think I had heard from people how much they appreciated having that on. I think it brings sort of a little more brightness and joy to downtown. And also, I think from a public safety standpoint, makes things a little bit brighter. And even, I was just talking to some people at Pete's this weekend and they were, I had mentioned that this was coming up and they were certainly supportive of that, felt like it added to the downtown. I know that this might interfere with sort of the holiday light sort of kickoff, but I, I mean, we've got fantastic staff who I'm sure can figure out how to make that an event and do that. So my general thought is just to have a, have a chance to look at that, you know, see whether it's something we could do and, you know, not obviously making, asking for any commitments now, but just sort of that, you know, we could agendize and look at maybe adding that to the downtown. I think it brings an extra, extra piece of brightness and joy to the downtown and then that I think will help the businesses. I know the Chamber sent a letter in its support and hope I can get a couple other council members to join in and want you to take a look at it.
I'd be willing to take a look at that. I, I think it's a great idea. Holiday lights are wonderful and maybe it'll bring some people down who would otherwise go to eucalyptus and maybe that'll solve another problem.
I, I support bringing this back as well.
All right, yeah, I'm in favor of it as well. I don't know, I don't see Councilmember Collins. I don't know if you've taken yourself on mute, I can't tell, but.
I, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, okay, yep. Sounds like it could be additive and it's a low-hanging fruit. So, thank you, Councilmember Rack. All right, Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, I was approached by, you know, heard, heard from quite a few folks about general concern about how the SFPUC is taking a look in January about withdrawing the lease for the Crystal Springs Cross Country course. And, you know, John Lillygren, who spoke before us this evening in public comment, he's actually the, both the boys and girls head coach of cross-country at Carmont. And there are an awful lot of San Carlos residents, past and present members, are involved with the cross-country programs there and plenty of other people that use that facility. So I, I do think of it as a general San Carlos issue. And I know Belmont is showing some leadership just to try to lobby the SFPUC to remind them of, you know, what an important community asset that cross-country course is. And I would just like us to consider making a similar proclamation and joining that effort to some extent. So we'd just like to, you know, have us consider that at some point.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to build on John's thoughts. I appreciated the large outpouring of community support today for basically, you know, supporting Belmont in their resolution to, you know, make sure that this community resource, really a regional community resource, continues to be available to the public. And it's not just a Belmont issue. I know that we have cross-country teams at our middle schools who use that, the cross-country trails and our high schools as well. So I do think that this impacts residents of San Carlos and I would support, you know, taking a look at the resolution that Belmont brings forward and see if we could do some kind of friendly resolution as well.
Thank you. Greg, I see you brought your video camera on. Did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the council, you know, this is just about setting it on the agenda. And I understand we need to introduce the subject matter at a certain level, but I just want to just give a gentle reminder on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to, to, as appropriate, take a look at this and if we can do something quickly. I know that timing is of essence in here, so I'd be supportive of doing something, getting it on agendas and taking a look at it.
All right, sounds like you've, you've got your, your three. Councilmember Dugan?
It's great. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all right. All right, all right, um, any further items for agenda setting at this point? All right, um, then we are adjourned, um, and we got done before nine o'clock, Councilmember Collins.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.